On the agenda, which is the approval of tonight's agenda. Actually, give me one second. Town Administrator Bailey Hedgepath, I'm just realizing at the top, it says work session, but then it follows like opening prayer, pledge of allegiance. So I think it just got carried over from. Yeah. No worries, no worries. For the community, we have a new agenda building software and it helps compile the information for the council meeting. So we're just working out the kinks and getting familiar with how to update everything in there. So just bear with us if you're seeing the same thing on your agenda at home. So I'll move right down the list to the approval of tonight's agenda and we'll ask for a motion to approve. Moved by Councilmember Dixon, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Brown. Any corrections or edits to the agenda? I did want to just ask because there are minutes notated against the first couple of items. If we could add times for the remaining items. So for approval of minutes, if we can agree for five minutes for that, it should move pretty quickly. Does that sound all right to the council?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. And then for financial business, 20 minutes, just so we stay on track there. Does that sound reasonable to everyone?
Yeah, because we've been going over the budget for the past couple of months.
Correct, okay. So Mr. Tenelli will do a 20-minute recap on proposed FY 2025 budget. And then we do have a number of items leading into tonight's council meeting. So would ask if 30 minutes sounds okay so we can go through everything and answer all the questions of the council.
That's for the whole section?
Yes, for the whole section.
The time section, okay.
Okay, awesome. All right, so we have our adjustments to tonight's agenda. Hearing no other edits, I'll now call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. At this time, we'll move right along with the approval of minutes from prior work sessions, beginning with the April 8, 2024 minutes. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Councilmember Dixon, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember McBride. Any corrections or edits to the minutes? I did note on page one, we just need to remove the bottom that references March 11, 2023. And then also in the approval of the agenda, it should be five to zero on the motion passing. It was unanimous to approve the agenda. And then the other item is on page two under the economic development update redevelopment should just be one word. And then under adjournment, it said, it should say Mayor James asked for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Councilmember Brown moved and so on from there. So that's in the recording, so the staff can follow up with those amendments. Did, did you guys see any other items that need to be adjusted on the minutes for the April 8 work session? Nope. Okay. Oh, okay. So with, sorry, council?
Oh, no, no, I thought.
Oh, okay. Okay, so with that, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it. Next, we'll proceed with the review and approval of the May 13 work session minutes. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Councilmember Dixon, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilmember Blunt. Are there any comments, questions, or corrections to the May 13 minutes? All right, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. And then the town council budget work session minutes for May 20th were not in the packet. The staff needs a little more time. So if you're okay, just tabling that until the July meeting. Does that sound all right to the council?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's fine, yeah.
Great. So with that, we will move on. We do not have any presentations or unfinished business. So we will jump right into financial business with Mr. Tenelli and Town Administrator Bailey Hedgepath. Town Administrator, did you want to just give a quick recap before turning it over to Mr. Tenelli?
I'm, yeah, I think that I'm just gonna do the first just page and then I'll turn the rest of it over to Mr. Tenelli if that's okay, Mayor. Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Council. We're proud to present the proposed budget for fiscal year 2025. Some of the documents that have been attached to the, to the council, for the council's review are the final budget. Mr. Tenelli and I tried to put in everything that the council has talked about over the, over the, over the last few sessions. And then we also have added some new information to the budget documents, which will be in the final version. It will have an introduction letter from myself. We will have some information on some basics of what these terms mean, which I think is what you'll see in the draft. Hey, Sean, Sean, can you help, please? Sorry.
You can come out and.
I'm sorry. That the, so the terms, some of the basic terms, next, the introduction, the introduction letter. And then we will also include information on the full-time staffing equivalent, which is a new, which is a new addition that this is. But what you're looking at right now is the actual overview of the budget, which Mr. Tenelli will start on. But I just wanted to kind of introduce those things to you that kind of shows that we have 57.5 full-time equivalents in this budget proposal. And also, we've also included the range, salary ranges, which a lot of municipalities do to kind of keep that level of transparency to say we have X number of this position and Y number of that position. So we're trying to keep those things consistent as we move forward. And Mr. Tenelli, is there anything else that we can, that you might want to add from the standpoint of items that we had in there? And I think we have a couple of charts that we're gonna add in there as well.
We made some changes to the grants for future grant activity next year. And that is a moving target right now because we've applied for grants and we're getting awarded more grants for next fiscal year. But, you know, we have to look at what's actually gonna happen in the next two weeks at the end of June versus most of it's gonna be pushed off into FY 25. The revenues, I projected an incre, a small increase on the property taxes for what we talked about and an increase in the apartments and also increase in the railroad and utility taxes. That added about almost $200,000 in revenues, which brought down the transfer from fund balance to C down. Now it's at the $575,000 transfer when it was over $750,000, I believe. And the budget's in tab three of your folders, just so you can follow along too. And ARPA, I said that, we talked about some ARPA items at the last meeting. I said there might be $70,000 that has not been tagged yet by the mayor and council. I'm not sure if it's gonna be that much. It might be in the 50 or, you know, I kept saying, you know, I'm not sure like where that's gonna fall. So it might be between 25 and $70,000 depending on how the next, the end of month finishes out. But it's really the end of August finishes out because we keep the books open, just so you know, through August because it takes that much time to get the balance of our revenues in, especially from the state for state income tax, for state highway user revenues, and also for the state funding for the police grant, the annual police, police grant of $300,000. And we also are gonna realize the personal property taxes that were filed, you know, in FY 24, but paid in FY 25. So all that still has to, you know, hash out still. And we're also gonna have two months of speed camera funds as well. So, but that was, that was the changes in the income. So you can see it's on, it's just shy of $13 million in revenues. A little bit of increase over FY 24 and an even larger increase over FY 23. And that's because really of the speed camera revenues. So everybody following along all right so far?
Sorry, you just, one of us is missing, so we're gonna share.
On tab three?
Yeah, Councilmember Brown didn't have it, so we're sharing.
Sorry. It was blank?
Teamwork. Well, it just had, it just had the.
The letter and the write-up before the budget. It just didn't have the spreadsheets. But we're, we're good.
That's why I had that extra one left over.
That's right, that's right. Okay.
Sorry, Councilmember Brown. I started holding this pack. I'm like, why is there one left over? I had it, I had it all carefully planned out and counted out and everything and put my hand on everything. I'm holding an extra one. I'm like, you know, I thought, you know, because everybody had a home there in the binder, so it's, you know. But anyway, so the transfer from, from fund balance is at 4% of the budget. And historically, I've shown on the side last time, I can pull it up again, it's gonna be between four and eight percent. We averaged between four and eight percent. And now we're on the low side again at 4%. Expenditures, again, this is only a summary I'm touching on. I'm gonna flip through the detail. What time is it, Mayor? What time does it start?
You are okay. It's only 40 minutes.
Okay, all right. I'll, I'll try to stop at like six, okay? Is that all right with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's perfect.
I missed my clock. There it is. Okay. So let's run down the detailed expenses. I call it detailed. It is our department expenses. And you can see graphs here on the next page. That is our three-year graphs of last year, current year, and projected next fiscal year. And you can see where the increases are. Again, I'm, I'm still on revenues here. This helps a little bit. You can see the increase in the real estate taxes all the way over here on the left. Those three tall bars there. And that's because of the 6% increase, 6.4% increase in assessed values of the properties in Bladensburg. And also for a small amount of that is for the increase in the taxes we're talking about. And you need something there? Let me find you something. And. The business personal property taxes, same thing. It's a, yeah, Coke? I got a Coke. A Coke? Oh, okay. Oh, okay. The business personal property taxes have an increase again because of, we increased the railroad and utility tax. Income tax, but close, close to the same. A lot of these are the same. What dropped off here is the federal funding and that's because of the decreased amount of ARPA funds available through next year. State funding increased because of the bond bill and service charges are increasing because we're bringing online the, the red light enforcement. Okay, so that's revenues for right now. Again, we have another graph of it. Expenditures. The administrative departments, mayor and council, town administrator, clerk and finance are our smallest ones. They make up about 14% of our total budget. Not, on the whole, not much change there. I mean, there's small increases and decreases, but when you look at it this way, it's really not that mu, much of a, of a difference. Public safety, increase for the, we had an increase this year for the SAT team. And we're also budget increases for COLA and Merit. Public works, we had an increase of our three part-time staff and that is why I see the increase there. You can see ARPA falls off because of the ARPA funding is down. And one second, y'all, I'm trying to. And capital projects are increasing because of what we plan to increase with the FOSWIC and, and also with the federal. Help me out there. The federal. Thank you, thank you. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. And I'm gonna run down the department expenses. That took about three minutes, so I'm gonna do like a couple minutes. Okay.
You're doing good so far.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, that's fine.
Yeah.
I, I know. Yeah, I, I'm talking to the public too.
Yeah, that's true.
We got a packed house here, so I have to keep them there.
That's right.
So the, the compensation increase mostly because of the, of the health insurance elections. And this, and let me see. Council business development, we increased that based on discussions for going to the conferences that you all need to go to and talk to your peers and everything. We've had this on the budget every year. It just has not been used and then it fell off because of COVID. Now I think everybody is, you know, should be utilizing this again. And this is to like PG CMA, NLC, MML. Employee recognition, we talked about that. We bumped that from 8,000 to 15,000. The rest of these have remained the same. We still have the, the community grants in there. And the rest of line items stay pretty much the same except for membership because of the dues increase for MML. And we also added a separate travel line item for going to the conferences out of state. And historically, they, they've been lumped into professional development. Really, I think they, they should be separated out because it's, because travel is, the, the conferences are a fixed rate and travel is variable. So, you know. That's the mayor and council budget. Any questions so far?
Not a question. Just a note that we did agree to do a small scholarship fund for Bladensburg students. So whether they're going to trade schools.
Oh, thank you. I'll skip over that.
Universities or community colleges. That's what that $5,000 is for. So once we get into the fiscal year, we can work on the application, the steering committee for that and so forth. So that, and how we launch it to the community and make it available.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, sorry, Councilmember.
Hello.
You had a question? Oh, it's separate. Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's separate. Yes, ma'am. Okay. And then Councilmember Dixon, you had a question?
Sure, Mayor James. Mr. Vito, can you explain the fire department donation?
Yeah, we started that off, that, that started in the budget years ago as like $5,000. That's line item number 6226 on the mayor and council budget expenditures. And we slowly increased it. We've done it in quarterly payments to the fire department, just as a town support to the fire department. And not only that, it also helps with our tax differential, which is kind of neat because as a mayor and council makes the donation to the fire department, all the residents actually get a discount on their tax bill from the county because of that. So, and our tax differential this year, I think is about 14% discount. So that plays into, into it all, along with us providing public safety protection and public works. So, so, so that contributes to the fire department is looked at as like a total public safety service that the town is providing, that the county does not have to. So we get a tax. So the residents get a tax differential, meaning they get a discount on their $1 per 100 tax because the town's providing it for them.
Thank you for that detail.
Mm-hmm. And it used to be 15, it, it went from 5,000 to 10,000 to 12,000, then went to 20, then to 22,500, then up to $30,000. And, you know, the fire department will say, you know, that's a, you know, they could use a lot more, you know. And they do, they do do a lot of work and.
They do.
And respond to a lot of calls in Bladensburg. But we're also fortunate with the ARPA funds to purchase them a $400,000 ambulance as well. So, and, which is significant, you know, so it's, it's the first time that the town has been able to do that, I guess, in town history. So.
And then also, Mr. Vito, and, and they service other municipalities and other areas as well.
Correct, correct. Yes.
So if everybody is doing their part and making their contributions like we are.
Yeah, it would be nice if everybody followed our lead. Yeah, you know, so. I mean, Bladensburg always sets, sets the bar very high, so, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Vito.
So, Mr. Tenelli, we're down to 550, so I'm not rushing you, but.
Did you score the clock?
No, it was just, it seemed like it was just 536 and we blinked and, yeah.
Yeah, also time-space continuum. I'm sorry. So the, again, just to sum, sum up these small budgets, I put a sheet here called administration combined and that sums it up. At, at the end of the day, it's a total of a 7% increase over this fiscal year. And that is because of, we added for the HR consultant under the town administrator. We added funds for that. Real quick, let me skim through the year changes. That, that was the major one. Oh, and the membership line item and also professional development. So. So let's go on to public safety. If that's okay. Public safety, at the end of the day, if you scroll to the very bottom, it's a 2% increase. Okay. The, about 20% of that budget now is being picked up through traffic enforcement, through the red light camera, and also through speed camera funds. Now, the only unknown here with the red light cameras are, is we don't have that up and going yet. Just like with, with speed cameras, you know, we gotta take that leap of faith, knowing, you know, experience and past data, what that's gonna bring in. So. And, and that is a, and that is funding for a chief and 30 law enforcement officers, seven in communications, three code enforcement, two part-time cadets, an admin aide, an executive assistant, to have a total of 45 employees of public safety. So you got those green columns there. If you go over to the left, the FY 24, it says 541,694 dollars and ARPA funded. We don't have that in this budget year, okay, as part of the revenue. We're hoping that that balance that is gonna be picked up through the red light camera funds. Public works draft budget, sure.
No, the red light, excuse me, the red light camera funds, is that, is that?
I'm gonna go up real quick to revenues. I'll show you where that is. I have it. Right here.
4780.
Yeah. It's not a one-to-one offset, but it's pretty close. So we have it in there projected at $537,000 for next year. Some folks will say that is a very low estimate, but for me, not knowing what it is, I'd rather keep it at that right now. So it's, because, you know, we do have some high-traffic area signals. So. I'm doing time there. 554. Okay, so public works. It's actually a decrease. If you go down to the very bottom, page 12, material services, we bumped slightly because we just put that out the bid and we're also adding, you know, additional space to clean here in the town because we are trying to occupy every square inch of the, of these buildings. So they have to be taken care of as well.
Excuse me, Mr. Vito, we have additional space to add?
I'm talking about, if, if we can find a closet and put a desk in it, I'm talking, you know, so it's, I mean. Yeah, I was about to say, have you seen poor Major's office? It, it looks like he is in a cell. I mean, there's no windows or anything. It's, you know, so it's, you know. I walked by, wanted to tell him, you know, walk outside, you know, it's nice and sunny out there. So I feel bad for him. So. The ARPA funds that we projected, we tagged $180,000 of ARPA uses for next year. And that was for the community development and redevelopment activities, food assistance, and also for community programming, $75,000. And I have here $20,000 unapplied, to be determined, not sure yet. So, you know, we'll talk about that, I'd say, around the, around the September meeting when we know what's gonna be actually left over to put in, that, that has not been programmed yet for ARPA.
Mr. Tenelli, Councilmember Blunt had a question for you.
Sure.
Excuse me, with the 25K for the Boys and Girls Club, is that money going straight to them or are we providing the program ourselves?
That's, that's to fund the program and have them provide the service, so we're not pulling on staff to work that program.
So that money goes strictly to the Boys and Girl Club?
Correct. Yeah, to Bladensburg, yeah.
Oh, so we have our own.
We're gonna have our own, yes.
So, you open up?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, so, so ARPA is still open. So, I mean, we have the business assistance, you know, that has not been applied for, and also for the security camera. And actually, the security camera program went dormant for a little while, and then people are starting to reapply again.
I was gonna say that that twenty thousand dollars could get used by the, by the security camera program. And we're kind of holding it there because we just don't have those applications in at this moment. But that's why, that's why I just wanted to make sure that that was, you know, one of the things that is still outstanding. We have less so, we have gotten, we haven't gotten any business recently, but we do get steadily over the summer, the security camera. So, that's why that twenty thousand dollars may go this summer, and that might, then that might be applied to twenty twenty-four fiscal year. So, I just wanted to kind of give the what that could, could come out of there still, is that. And I thought the council's desire would be to keep that open for residents at this point, to never, to not to close that up. Because it's, it's something that people are utilizing.
And next couple pages and a couple minutes I have left here, you can see is a summary. You have to squint really hard, but that is, in case, you will see it online, you can blow it up, you can see how it is by department all on one page. That's not for, that's not for showing here or for reading there. That's for, you know, you go online and blow it up your hand, you know, like three hundred percent. And then I have a summary three-year comparison, which I think is really helpful, starts on page sixteen. And you can kind of see like the history of last year, this current fiscal year, and next fiscal. And at times, it feels like it's all in one, you know, it's just, just from our activities here. So, that goes on through page eighteen. And then also put in the cold history that we've had for the last few years. And that is on page nineteen. Okay. Actually, I'm just trying to go on there. Authorized strength. And what about the taxes? Where, which ones?
Did you want to talk about the tax rates? Because if we wanted this tax rate, the budget?
Yeah.
That's something like, you have to, that's it, I think that's the last part of your problem.
Yeah. Yeah, the constant yield rate. One second.
Council member, did you have a question?
Go ahead.
Mr. Vito, how much percent do we make from the cable franchises fees?
Well, that's been dropping off because that's based on subscribership. And with everybody going to an online format now, we're losing the. Instead, people buying, you know, the premium channels and packages, they're just getting internet service. So, at one point, that was like almost a two hundred thousand dollar line item, now it's down to, I think, what, a hundred fifteen thousand dollars or something? Where is it? Yeah. I'm sorry, my screen's locked up, y'all.
It's okay, your time is up.
Hold on, I got a minute. Just kidding.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's a hundred twenty thousand dollars now. This fiscal year had a hundred ten thousand, last fiscal was a hundred twenty, but four years ago, it was like a hundred and fifty, a hundred and eighty thousand. People just aren't buying, you know, the premium channels because they can just stream them now. So, so, and that is a negotiated agreement the municipalities and the county has with Comcast and Verizon. That's negotiated every three years, so those fees come back. And actually, you do see the fees on the bill. It'll say like one point two percent or something, or I forget what it is.
So, Mr. Tenali, I know you were gonna move on to the constant yield. And the items you're gonna talk about now, they're on page six of the introductory letter for the proposed budget. For those who may be looking at the documents online, it's page six out of fourteen, where it starts to detail those.
Let me go back to it, mayor.
Yep.
My Zoom is blocking me from seeing the. Oh, here it is, okay. What page number?
Six of fourteen.
Six of fourteen, I think the mayor just said that.
Yeah.
Okay, this is what we're gonna talk about in the.
No, Mr. Tenali, I'm sorry, I didn't realize council member Dixon had another question. Are you sure? It was before we move on, I'm sorry, I think I interrupted.
That's okay.
So, I apologize for that. Are you sure you didn't have it? Okay, all right.
I'm gonna need like a red light up here, because I'm staring this way sometimes, I don't see any questions, you know, yeah. The, okay, next meeting, which is at the seven o'clock meeting, we're gonna have a constant yield hearing. Now, a constant yield hearing is, the regs change this year that we don't have to have a constant yield hearing unless there's going to be any change in taxes. So, and, and in the real property taxes, okay, so. I'm just gonna talk about this one.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Where's it on here, Michelle?
It's at the bottom of it, so, so like there, you have the railroad taxing on the, at the very bottom, right above you, you just scroll right there. The right there, you see the residential right there? What is the.
Oh, thank you, okay, okay, all right, sorry.
Yeah, no worries.
So, what this is, is we kept the tax rate the same for the single-family homes in town. But we are looking at increasing the apart, the tax on the apartments from seventy-four cents per one hundred. We advertise as up to eighty-five cents per one hundred, but what's in the budget right now is the eighty cents per one hundred. And I think we talked last meeting, that was the middle ground, and that is like, you know, it's a small increase. I think it was about thirty-five dollars per apartment that we're talking about. Is that what I have on here?
Yes.
And all, so, that has to go through the constant yield hearing at the next meeting.
An average thirty-four dollars annually.
Yeah, okay, so, yes, so, yeah, so it's an average of thirty-four dollars per apartment increase. And this is on tab three of the budget. It's in the letter on top of the budget, page six.
In seven.
In seven. Good? All right, just make sure everybody's, you know, I'm gonna go ahead. And what doesn't require council action is our increase, or any increases in the business personal property tax. Because that's not billed by the state or the county and then remitted to us. Just the assessments are sent to the town, and it's up to the town to determine their own rate, bill and collect based on the business personal property assessments.
It does require the action of the mayor and council.
Correct, yes. The constant yield here.
It doesn't require a hearing.
Yeah.
I wanted to correct that because.
Just because it does require your action, but it does not require a hearing or advertisement. So, for the, for the, for that one, sorry.
No, that's great, yeah.
I just want the minutes to be right.
And we pulled out the utilities and the railroad business personal assessments, and we're gonna increase those to two dollars and seventy-five cents per one hundred dollar assessment. And that's already included in the budget.
Any questions from the council there? Okay, all right.
We've six minutes over, not there.
Don't worry, I know you had to get it all in, plus we were peppering you with questions too.
That's fine, no, I mean, the more questions they ask, the more transparent, you know, I mean, the more citizens know, instead of just putting a document out there and saying, this is, you know. And we can determine how much to talk about at the council meeting, if any, if they're just going to approve it, then, you know, just tell me how much to talk about when we get there.
Okay, sounds good. I'm thinking if you just do the high-level recap and just bucket it by administrative recap, you know, the one spreadsheet that has it all compiled. So, then the public is able to see, okay, so, for everything from finance to town administrator budget, clerk, and mayor and council, that equates to fourteen percent, the balance on the other one. Yeah, and then, of course, the residents are welcome to go back and view all the YouTube videos from the prior meetings too, in case they want to get a little bit more in-depth. Does that sound okay? Or would you prefer to have more details in the seven o'clock meeting?
No, I mean, I think the good cursory overview, because with the full snapshot, and then you're showing the current year and the previous years, and it's all there and going through that. And because we have been going over it for the past two months, a month and a half, two months, and we have documentation. So, and then if any questions come out of that, but, yeah, I think, I think that's, that's good.
Okay, council member Blunt says she agrees too, and council member McRae. Okay, so, that'll be our plan for the seven o'clock meeting. So, we'll move through the agenda to the next items under new business, which is titled preview of town council meeting items. And here, we want to just talk through a number of projects. There's a number of requests for bids, and then also for some resolutions to be reviewed and approved by the council. So, town administrator, we will turn it over to you.
Good evening, mayor council. There are two resolutions on the agenda, resolution number thirteen twenty twenty-four, and it's a resolution to support an application for the state's local cybersecurity grant program. We'll be working with our vendor NTI on providing a application for this. There are actually two items that we'll be looking at. One is a, an item called a, it's some type of a locker, but it will protect our, protect passwords, protect different cyber data. And that's, it's some, it's a, an additional program that the town was actually going to actually purchase. And this will be able, this is an eligible expense for that grant. The second item, which is more of a stretch, which we're gonna look at, is the way that the town's wiring, and we're kind of daisy-chained together, if you've ever been in town hall, and to improve the infrastructure. And under this grant, you can apply for an infrastructure grant. So, we're going to apply for both, and NTI is gonna provide the quoting, the quote information for us, so that we can submit real numbers. So, that's the first one. Are there any questions?
Not really a question. I know I saw the notification go out last week, and appreciate you letting me know you were already on top of it about this grant opportunity. But I do appreciate being proactive, because a number of municipalities, and especially small ones, are getting hit with cybersecurity challenges or being hacked. And what's scary is it's happened to the city of Baltimore, it's happened to Leonard Town. Prince George's County Public Schools had their data hacked at the beginning of the school, the school year, the current school year, which was a nightmare. So, I'd rather we be proactive and beef up our security and get the right infrastructure and systems in place to avoid that as much as possible. Because once your data is hacked, I mean, you're at the mercy of these individuals, and I know you're not supposed to negotiate with them, but it's very difficult when they have all of your residents' personal information or employees. Yeah, council member Dixon, you're right, all your data, basically. So, look forward to seeing this project through. But any questions or comments from the council before we move on? Okay, all right.
So, mayor council, the second item is resolution fourteen twenty-four. It's a resolution for an application for the Department of Community and Economic Development Grants, DCHD. They have two programs. One program is for the facade improvement program, which is something that Jared and I have been working on and putting together, and putting together a program to start to roll out in preparation for this, this grant program. And then the second is for the National Capital Region Strategic Grant and Infrastructure Grants, capital grants. What we would probably, what we're looking at is either to find additional capital for this town hall complex, or an additional capital for the purchase of the crossroads or those kinds of properties. Those, the properties that have to do with the school that we want to put in for the trade school. So, those are the two things, so, that's what we're, that's what that application process will be for. So, there are two separate applications, the resolution is supportive for both of them.
All right, thank you for that description and overview. Town administrator Bailey Hedge-Pett, are there any questions or comments from the council regarding resolution fourteen dash twenty twenty-four? No, hearing none, okay, we'll come back to you. Oh, sorry, council member, where are you?
They're in your packet, they're in the same.
In tab five.
They're both in the same.
That's the first one, and then the next one is fourteen dash twenty twenty-four, it's right behind there.
No, it's right behind it. So, they're, it's.
Next page behind you.
Next page behind it, yeah. Okay. Yeah, it's, it's right behind it. So, ones, they both look alike, but they're right together. There's one that's for one and one's for the other. So, there's one for one and one for the other, yeah. Each one of the grants somewhat likes a resolution or a letter of support, and so the resolutions of support, I'm gonna start to put them together before they come out, like I've done them a couple times. And I'll start putting them out for you guys, just so that we can do them as one council action, so that you know what's going on with the grant process.
Yeah, and that definitely understands strengthens the application when you have that as part of your application packet. So, it doesn't look as though staff is doing something and the council hasn't either authorized it or isn't in agreement with it. So, I appreciate you making this a more standardized situation and process, because it hasn't been this formal in the past, and it really is helping us to get things together. So, there were no questions about resolution fourteen dash twenty twenty-four, so we'll move on to the Gordian contract.
So, C is a, is a contract for services with Gordian. Gordian has the State of Maryland contract for general services. That includes roughly about nine or ten areas of repairs. When the council was talking about roof repairs, Gordian is a great partner to use for general services. And what they would do is they actually bid out the project, get the lowest bid based on the state, using the state contract prices. But they're also project managers, so they would help Mr. Hall in that process. I was gonna let, Mr. Hall has worked with them a little bit, which we were trying to do some projects with them. I just wanted to give him an opportunity to kind of talk about the interactions he's had.
Thank you, Ms. Michelle. And I say, this is the first time we've, I've worked with them, but I know they're from South Carolina, which they do a broad range throughout the whole East Coast of working with plenty of municipalities. And what we're working with them now is for our bridge repairs. And they, we've, we've met plenty of times, they have, they have, I mean, exclusive knowledge about, I mean, everything. They come with seven, eight people or time, so everybody has the whole scope of work. And then, you know, when, I feel comfortable with them because they're helping me out a little bit while I'm messing with the Prince George County inspector and trying to mess with them two at the same time. So, they understood, I mean, they understand the little delays here and there, but, I mean, it's very, very unique company that I can see. I haven't dealt with them yet, but far as just the introduction and what we've went through on our scope of work for the town, it just seemed like they can be very helpful in many ways. Not just the bridge repairs, just period, in general.
That's really good to hear, Mr. Hall, that from the beginning, they're showing they can be a good partner, but also bring a lot of value.
Yes, ma'am.
And expertise to really lighten your load. So, thank you for that background, and thank you, town administrator. Are there any questions from the council? Council member Brown?
Thank you, mayor, thank you, Mr. Hall.
Yes, ma'am.
And Mrs. Bailey Hedge-Pett. And I think, I think it's really good, because it's under the Maryland Department of General Services, and then when you look at with the master contracts and the IDIQ and everything, and we can fall, you know, in line with that. I mean, it just really, all really makes sense, and it, yeah, and to put some continued, I guess, structure streamlining, you know, processes to it and support that, that will help move projects and things along a lot faster. Yeah, so, and also to help our town administrator as well. Yeah, thank you for that.
Thank you, council member, council member Dixon. Okay, but I a hundred percent agree, I mean, helping us to really standardize our process, and then knowing DGS is already aligned with it, is really gonna help improve our efficiency, but also help. is really going to help improve our efficiency, but also help us to pick up the pace so we're not being delayed because your bandwidth is what it is. So I want to commend you as well for even looking into this resource and doing the research to bring it out here. I mean, that kind of proactive attitude and actions, it really is helping us to take leaps and bounds so we can get to these bridge repairs and the long list of other projects that we have to do. And that list is long. So we really appreciate the foresight on your side and bringing that to us. It looks like we don't have any other comments or questions, so back to you, Town Administrator.
So the next one is the approval of a council meeting schedule for July and August, real quick. And so that would say that we're looking from staff standpoint, because of the Fourth of July event happening on the fifth, it would be a hard turnaround for us for the eighth, for the agenda, if it's possible. I'm just, I'm requesting it as a, as a Town Administrator for July fifteenth, for us to move the council meeting if it's possible for everyone. And then the second part was that whether or not the council wants to have the, continue the tradition of taking off August. And this will then allow you to, to do both at the same time.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning the timing for the July meeting because you're right. Just looking at the calendar, the way that the holiday falls and then our fireworks event being on Friday, July fifth. So you'd have Thursday, the fourth, which is the federal holiday, so the offices closed. Friday is normally the day where staff is compiling everything. The agenda's been posted, now they're getting all the resources together. So expecting them to do that on the day of the fireworks would be kind of mean. So we don't want to do that. Yeah, so would the council be open to moving the meeting to July fifteenth? Does that work for everyone? Okay, and so that would be for both the work session and council meeting? So, okay. And I'm trying to remember, Michelle, this isn't a financial change, so I believe we can just go ahead and vote on it now, correct?
Well, I have it on the regular agenda for you.
Oh, okay, so we can just do it there. Okay, sounds good.
I wasn't on the mic. I'm sorry, Rick.
Sorry, Rick. Okay, and then on the other item of August recess, are there any objections to the council having the August recess for this year? Okay.
I'm sorry, I object to that.
I kind of thought you would. And it's your birthday month, too. Actually, two birthdays in August.
Yeah, no objection.
No objections, okay, there you have it. All right, so we'll have those two items to vote on in the next meeting. And then Town Administrator, let's see here, for item E?
Yes, and what I'm going to do is combine F and G for you because that's, they're both, they're kind of the same. So E is a contract with Lightning Maintenance for Fifty-seventh Avenue Project and using both DCHD funds from the state and highway user funds. And it's not to exceed an amount, I believe, as one, about one ninety-seven, under ninety-seven thousand. Light, we had to redo this RFP twice again to kind of, to deal with what Mr. Hall was saying in regards to the process right now. Because the first set of bids came out to be about eight hundred to nine hundred thousand dollars. And we could not afford it with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we had. So we asked them to move down the scope to ten. And so those, we got two bids for the ten after working with vendors. And that's what you've got in front of you, those two bids. One is from, one is over two hundred and eighty-one thousand, the other one is for the one ninety-seven. And we're finding funds from our highway user fees to augment the DCHD money that we got in twenty twenty. And this will now close out that grant and also make us eligible for new funding. So I'm very excited about doing that.
And I think you're right. Having these projects, or at least the first phase done, will give credibility to future applications when we apply for the rest of the funding. But I'm just so, just still in my hurt feelings, you know, from what this project was supposed to be, to see how astronomically the costs have gone up over the last few years, it's just, it's a little hard to believe. But I do appreciate the approach to just do a phased approach to getting that project through. And then just sort of tangentially, wanted to ask Mr. Hall, there's also two light bases on Fifty-seventh. Okay, you're shaking your head.
No, go ahead.
Okay. I think in both cases, they were hit by metro buses and so they're leaning. Do we have the ability to take care of that in the current fiscal year?
Yeah, we should be able to find that in the, in highway user funds to fix those. That's not, I think, and what we can do is we can, we can bid out the repair, we can get a quote for the repair. I don't think it'll exceed the ten thousand for the repair, but I'm not sure unless, because these poles themselves are kind of expensive. So if we have to replace a pole, these are new poles that are LED. And that, right now, those are not LED, correct, the old poles?
Well, they was, when LEDs first came out.
Okay.
LED bulbs. What I was waiting for is to be corresponded with the new lights. So we can get the same head and put it up there.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. So we have to figure out how much those are going to cost, or we have to do our eight, that would be eight, and then replace the two. So we can look at our scope, how about that?
And Mr. Hall, let me just let you finish. So you were saying you were thinking about doing it as part of the Phase One?
No, ma'am. What we're going to do is when they come in, we can piggyback off of their vendor and buy and purchase our, just the heads ourself, with two poles and the heads ourself.
Okay.
So it could be corresponded with the new lights that we're putting up.
And for the base, is that difficult to repair? Because I don't know, have you seen that? It's, I mean, it's completely shifted over.
Well, the concern is, I don't think that, it's not a hard repair to slide it back over and put concrete around it again.
Yeah, the majority, the majority of the pricing is the, is the electrical work.
Sure.
And that's what, that's where, so when we're doing, when we're running these new lines, that's the big portion. There are, there are some for the things, but that's a lot with just the running it. So I think it's, we can get it repaired and bring it back. If it exceeds twenty thousand, we'll bring it, I mean, ten thousand, we'll bring it back.
Okay, great. Councilmember Brown?
Yes, thank you. I heard you say that Metro may be contributory to hitting.
We'll find a way to do them.
Exactly where I'm going, Mr. Vito. How will we build them back? Yes, yeah.
I mean, yeah, has it, I don't know that we've ever done it, but I know, at least with that second incident, the bus was up on the curb, the smaller vehicle was up on the curb as a result of the impact. So, and I'm sure from police records.
I think we should.
Major Dickerson could help us get the incident report showing the body or person who was at fault.
Yeah, we could go through Legit and subrogate it through them. And if we had all the, if we have all the information, we could just go through Legit and have them to then work, then to work through the issues with it. Because that's what, because they wanted to paying it out, they would end up calling their insurer too. So we could do that.
And Major, just, because I don't recall the exact date, would it be difficult to go back through the records to figure out, you know, the report or when it was, when the accident occurred from your side?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. No, it shouldn't be that difficult to research and come up with, say, accident reports.
Okay.
And one other thing, in terms of the poles and lights, so we're responsible for purchasing poles and lights and not Pepco?
For that particular, to add it?
I think Mr. Hall was about to say something too. I'm sorry, go ahead.
To answer your question, could you repeat that question, please?
Yes, I said, is the town responsible for replacing poles and lights and not Pepco?
Yes, ma'am, these are, these are purchased by the town. So we already have a phase of lights that the town purchased maybe twelve, twelve, eleven years ago. So what we're doing is we continuing the phase, which would be Phase Two. And all these poles that we're talking about, the town owns and not Pepco.
So we, I can't remember the source. I think the state, it was one of the grant opportunities from the state when you guys first did that round of lights are there. So I'm wrong. It's Phase Two, I should be saying, right, Mr. Hall? Phase Two. Got it, okay, yes, sir. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Hall or Town Administrator Bailey Hedgepath?
In regards to. In regards to this project, can you tell us if this funding amount for the project included the grant will cover the anticipated expenses?
Yes, one hundred and fifty thousand of it is the grant and forty-seven, the remaining forty-seven would be paid out of highway user roadway funding. So the grant does not cover the full cost, but we decided to, what, the reason why we're bringing this to you like this is for the council to say, you know, because I know that getting those streetlights started was a really important project. I already have applied for another hundred thousand under the DCHD Streetlight Program for this last year under FY twenty-four, and I call it Phase Two, so that we can continue. And then trying to just, every time those come up, trying to get our way through it, right, to this project to get it finished. And then what we can do is add funding to, from our, from highway user to those to augment.
Thank you, Michelle.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes, thank you. Just one more thing, and it doesn't have to necessarily be discussed right now. But just want to know, was there any reason why the town decided to say, okay, well, we wanted to purchase poles and bulbs and have that responsibility and not, and not Pepco have that responsibility? Go ahead, Mr. Hall.
Yeah, Mr. Hall, could you?
Well, I'm not really sure about the amount from Pepco or what the cost is, but Pepco already have lights out there. And as you know, if the Pepco put one light out there, you know how much, you know how expensive that is. So I think the town is doing a better, I mean, you know, doing it better by doing it theirself because if you talk to Pepco with ten lights. It's, it's very expensive.
Cost savings to the town.
And not only that, I mean, you know, we still have to maintain them too as well, you know?
Yeah, and then generally, Michelle, do you happen to know, just, because I know you've worked in another county too, but as far as the utility, what their standard requirement is for the distance for lights? Because I think part of the answer is that we're talking twelve years ago, so that would have been around twenty twelve, somewhere in that timeframe. But when the town wanted more lights, I don't think Pepco was willing to pay for them. So the idea was, let's go after some grant funding and then also understand and based on where there may have been spikes in crime, let's, you know, attack it with increasing the lighting in that area. But I just, I was wondering if you have an idea?
Yeah, so one, so this project was designed, we had a lighting designer contractor to come in and looked at the spacing and actually developed that. And maybe to go to more to what Councilwoman Brown is asking in regards to, why has this shifted from Pepco to the town? Over the last few years, more of the grants from Pepco have been towards the municipalities owning the infrastructure than them putting in new infrastructure. They're not putting as many lights on their utility poles, which is what the change is, is that they're only replacing the heads on the utility poles. They're not adding lights to utility poles as much, which is when we have actual streetlights and in other, on other places where Pepco is kind, and where BG, Pepco are doing those, they're usually adding them to their existing poles. And that's the reason, I think, why they are kind of moving away. And that's the reason why the state is getting incentive money from the utilities, which is then turned over to municipalities to purchase streetlights per se. Does that make more sense? Like, the reason why they're having, they have these separate pots is because they're taking utility taxes and fees and stuff from the PUC, which is the Public Utility Commission. And then they're giving them back to the municipalities through these programs so that they're, so we're purchasing the infrastructure themselves. It's a good, it's, I mean, it's, it's not great for the towns, to be honest with you, because you're right. It would be better if Pepco owned it, we just paid the utility for it, which is what we do in a lot of the other things. But they've really shifted that cost to the towns over the last fifteen years. And that's what these programs are sort of going to. But back to your question, Mayor, the lighting designer looked at it based on the new technology and has, he recommended that we put in forty lights based on the length of area. And so the new lighting has a certain, like, span or length. And I think, and it's really based on the type of lighting more than, let's say, a, a, more than, like, that's the standard, the footlights per, it's like something, they call it footlights per, that it gets off, I mean, that the lights give off. So that's what he used as to develop that project and to connect the two projects. Sorry, that's a long explanation for something simple.
That's all right, thank you for that. So I know we're getting short on time and have four more items on the agenda to get through. So we'll turn it back over to you for F and G.
Sure, certainly, Mayor. The last two are a, are sidewalk work that we are getting. We've gotten county community block grant funds for PY forty-eight, which is an old year of funding that we had to expend immediately. So these, one contract is for the sidewalks, which Alcoa Masonry won. What we did is that we had the, we had this bid out. Some people bid on all of the work and some bid on part of the work. Alcoa Masonry just bid on the masonry for, I mean, just on the concrete for the sidewalks. That include their scope, which is identical to the other, other two, was the lowest at seventy thousand ninety-six. And we're recommending them as the lowest responsible bidder and responsive bidder. The second contract is with E and R Services for asphalt and repaving. E and R came in second in regards to the concrete work. I know that we, Fort Myers, which is a very large company, also bid on this, which is great that they kind of saw our thing and bid on it. But their, their quotes were really, kind of really off whack between the two, the two local, the more local, local ones. And so we are recommending E and R for the second one at sixty-eight ninety, ninety-three for those two. And both of these bids were out for approximately four weeks. And we didn't get a lot of responses. We were, we're trying now to work with and get more asphalt responses and try to make them a little bit more succinct versus our, versus our current, our current bid documents. They're really unwieldy and they're hard to kind of deal with, this is the one that we have.
Thank you. Mr. Hall, did you want to add anything to that regarding the proposals or the work that we have for them to be done?
No, ma'am, she, I mean, she hit it, hit it on the head. What we, what we're talking about is just Millen and Overland up the street and then also Fifty-seventh Avenue sidewalk. It's just the ADA compliant ramps, the handicap ramps. That's, I mean, it's not a whole length of sidewalk, I mean, you know, whole linear feet of sidewalk. It's just the ramp, the ramp styles and bringing everything back to ADA compliant, like we did on Fifty-eighth Avenue, installing the mat, ADA compliant mat and all that. So when we start doing, I mean, from here on out, you know, when we're doing any sidewalk repairs, we have to be in compliance with the state as well. So that's why we, we're going back there to put the mats and stuff down and get it two percent ADA compliant.
That's really helpful. And then I also recall too, because we were kind of crunching to get Fifty-seventh repaved last year, just so we could meet the timeline of being done before school started, we agreed, let's just hold on the sidewalks for now and come back and do that later. So now the school year is wrapping up. I think one school is out, public schools will be done in, I guess, another week, week and a half, Friday? Okay, so. For teachers, yeah, so that timing works out perfectly. So thank you for keeping the progress, thanks to you and the Town Administrator. And back to you, Town Administrator, for the next one.
All right, the last two is just an overview of American in Bloom, just for the, for the public. I sent out the report to the council a couple of weeks ago, but I just wanted to make sure the council had the final community profile. I mean, if the community has a, the community has a copy of it. And the last one is the community grant process. I just, the community grant process is something that you guys have done every year. We took a old one, revised it up a little bit. It'll be an online process versus hard copies. What, if you approve of that or if you just, if there are any questions or anything that we need to, to make any changes to it, what we'll do is we'll bring back those applications to the council at the July meeting for you to approve the people that are submitted. And we'll just have a list and what they're asking for, and you'll get all that information. So we'll, staff will gather it all up and bring it to you with any recommendations that if there's, you know, people are missing information, but we'll just make those and put that together. So that's it.
Great, thank you. And I know it took a lot for the team to prepare for America in Bloom, so I don't want to overlook that. Mr. Hall from Public Works Team, Town Administrator Bailey Hedgepath, I feel like everyone got pulled in. Officer Reinhardt, thank you for always being a good tour guide for folks. But I appreciate all the collaboration. I think we all appreciate the collaboration, putting the schedule together, getting us signed up, hosting the judges and really showing them the best look of the town and giving them the best experience. I know I saw one email from one of the members of Amen Trust Board saying how much he enjoyed the opportunity to have them over at Boswick House. So I feel like you couldn't have done a better job with really building out a good tour and showing the beautiful assets that we have here in our community. So again, thank you guys so much for that. you guys so much for that. Oh, yes, please. Councilmember McBride?
No, I know that they truly enjoyed the boat ride, in which I toured with them. It was very nice. And they even made me aware of various types of birds that were out there, what we saw, beavers and all that. They truly enjoyed that. Thank you.
And it's true. They were very impressed with the sustainable wildlife along the river, which, you know, it has not always been the case. It's taken decades to get it back to where it is now. And most people don't realize, we have bald eagles right here in Bladensburg. You don't have to go way up in the mountains or out west to see them. They're right here. So seeing beavers return into the river, all these biological signs are letting us know that the river truly is getting cleaned up. So thanks to the good work Anacostia Watershed Society does, Chesapeake Bay Trust, they are always advocating for our water raise. It's really paying huge dividends to local communities. So we're really grateful for that. I did just want to ask, though, for the council before we adjourn, were there any questions related to the community grant application? It was put in the packet, really just refreshed for this year. I don't think there were any major changes from what I could see reading it over. But any comments? Councilmember Brown?
Yeah, I just want to go back just real quick to America in Bloom, real quick, and maybe for some of the residents. Just kind of like in the, in a few seconds, wrapping, summing it up, you know, what's the outcome of all of this supposed to do?
Would, would-
With America, America in Bloom.
Sorry. American Bloom is a community organization that does a, that helps, that has communities all over the nation. And you're grouped by size. So the town of Bladensburg is under the five thousand to ten thousand person size. And every year, they send out a panel, which looks at your quality of life. They look at eight different key indicators, which is what's in the profile. And we were able to provide that information to them. And then they also help you to develop and to basically help to make your town better by looking at what your beautification strategies that you're already doing, things you could be doing, ways that you're working now that could be done better. But they, they really focus on floral, but they also focus on long-term community sustainability. And I think that's what we showed them. And they also look at things like historical character, which is another, and forestry. So there's things that we have that we don't even know about, that you don't even think about the, the amount of things that we have in this town. So, but they also have awards. And I think the, the reason why you would do it as a town, just to kind of sum up, is the, from the standpoint of, you know, it's always good to take a look from the outside at the processes and things that you're doing, and then to take that information and improve upon it. Mr. Hall doesn't know it, but he'll be going to the America in Bloom, the, as a professional development with other public works directors in October in, in Ohio, along with Ray Jeffries. Yeah. So the two of them are gonna be our delegation because they've, what I heard from the, the two people is that the best thing that they could do is actually go to something like this from a public work standpoint to kind of meet other public works directors that are working on these kinds of projects. And Ray, from, they love Ray and they love his marketing, but, because they almost want him to teach a class in marketing. But for him to learn from other people that do community by vitality. I think that for me, it's like, I mean, I could, the town managers always do go to these, but for me, I feel like for them, it'd be much better experience. And I'll build on their, their professional development for them to go to something like this that will give them the opportunity to kind of meet with people in their professions throughout the country. So there you go.
That's fantastic. Excellent. All right. Well, any, uh-oh. It's nice to be voluntold, right?
Sometimes I'm not able to really get on my administrative side like I, I, I supposed to. But now since we got a little bit more help, I'm transitioning slowly.
Yeah. But it is good to be able to network, get ideas from other communities, and also help other communities based on the things that you've done for us. So I'm glad to hear you're open to going and think it'll be a really beneficial opportunity for you and Mr. Jeffries. So with that, we have come to the end of tonight's work session agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move?
Moved by Councilmember McBride. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Dixon. Any comments or questions before we move to the vote? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote now. All in favor, let it be known by the saying goodbye.
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it. We're adjourned. And we'll see you at seven o'clock.